Good evening, and welcome to Home TV's Ballot Meridian. Tonight, Terri Banis, Democratic incumbent candidate for the Ingham County Commissioners 11th District is joining us, and we'll have an entire hour-long call-in program. Her opponent, Republican candidate Xavier Durand-Hollis, declined to participate. Although he has declined, we will continue with our debate program as scheduled. My name is Eric Sherman. Tonight is Monday, October 17th, and we want you to call in with your questions for the candidates at (517) 349-1232, or you can tweet and Facebook your questions to #HomeTV #BallotMeridian. I want to thank Terri Banis for joining us, and we're going to begin with a brief introduction, if you will.
Hi, good evening. My name is Terri Banis, and I am the incumbent in the 11th District Board of Commissioners. I'm one of 14 county commissioners, and I represent Northern Meridian Township. I've been on the board for one term, and I'm seeking reelection with voter support for second term. I've lived in Meridian Township half my life, and most recently in the last 17 years or so. I've raised my family here. I've been part of the community in many ways, civically and socially, and I really enjoy this work, and I'm happy to be here. Thanks for the opportunity.
Great. Well, thank you for joining us. While we wait for your calls and tweets and Facebook questions, we do have a standard list of questions that we will begin with. We don't have any format, seeing you're alone, so no limits or restrictions. The first question I would like to ask is, the Potter Park Zoo and the Potter Park Millage renewal is appearing on the November ballot, and I was curious if you could explain your position on this and why?
Ingham County has taken a strong role in helping to manage Potter Park Zoo since the voters adapted the county's role in assuming control over the zoo several years ago, and it's gotten better. I think anybody in the Lansing area who goes there regularly with their children or other friends and families will agree that there's been some great improvements. I think the county management has been very professional, and it's been improving every year. We've made some great investments in some of the attractions there, and I'm very supportive of renewing this millage. I think it's turned out to be a very good program for us. It's been good for the community, good for residents. We are not asking for any additional. It's a straight renewal. It'll last for the next five, six years. And I look forward to Ingham County taking even a stronger role in managing the zoo right now. It shares some responsibility for operations with the Zoo Society. It's a nonprofit organization. But our Controller's Office has been taking a stronger look at the zoo operations and feels that now that there's an opportunity to hire a new zoo director, it would probably make sense and be a smarter move for all of us if that position became a full-time county position as opposed to what it was, which was shared between management by the Zoo Society and the county. The land is still owned by the City of Lansing, which was the previous full-time operator of the zoo. But I think it's a great feature and attraction for us. It's a reason why people from outside of the area come into the Lansing area, and it's a place where my kids grew up, and so many other people have grown up and enjoyed it. So I think I am looking forward, and many of us on the board continue to press and encourage the Controller's Office to make improvements and to help provide a more professional operation there, which is what it deserves. It's a natural evolution for that feature.
As long as we're talking about millages, I'd be interested in if you would share with us some previous millages that you've supported, and some that you might think in the future you would recommend.
Well, that's an interesting question. We had a number of millages that were on the August ballot back in, well, August 2nd. And among those were a couple of transportation millages that were combined into a one-mill Transportation Millage for Senior Citizens, the Elderly and Disabilities. I supported all of those millages. There was also a 911 Millage renewal. There were several renewals and one new millage. 911 was another one that was there for renewal. You know, most of our millages are set for a particular period of time, and then it's up to the voters, it's up to us to come back and talk to the voters about how things have been going, and if we choose to reduce it, or if we have a reason to change it in any way. When I first came on the board two years ago, a Human Services Millage was proposed in that same November timeframe, and it was during the course of my service in the first term on the Human Services Committee, which oversees that particular millage because it's part of Health Services. And I, as well as a majority of commissioners, all commissioners on that committee favored reducing it, and we did reduce it to a third of a mill for the reason that after the election took place, we learned, and I wasn't on the board before that, but we learned that the number of people eligible for that particular millage, which was tied to an income cap, were no longer needing that particular service through our Health Department and other related operations because they were no longer eligible, and many became eligible, chose to use the expanded Medicaid in Michigan that took place around the same time. So that was a millage that I reduced because one of the main reasons that county commissioners work, and it's a part-time job, I mean, our main responsibility is to continue to examine the budget and to see that tax dollars are being spent wisely, and to press and push for improvements when they're not. So that was an example of one that we reduced. Now, also in this past August, we saw a new millage that was proposed for building a new animal shelter, and I was supportive of that. That came before, that was initiated in the Law &amp; Courts Committee, which I'm also a member of. And I worked with Penelope Cernaglou, who was the lead champion for many years for the animal shelter, a very impressive individual, and I supported her efforts and worked on bringing that millage to the fore. I particularly, in particular, saw that, asked to see that millage reduced to six years. It was originally proposed as 10. And I thought that it would be wiser to reduce the length of the millage because, first of all, the building would be built within that period of time. And although we've also included new hires that would be funded, in part, an expansion of employees that were very, very necessary to the operation, I wanted to see that lessen in length so that we could go back to the voters and like examine it and, you know, give an opportunity to maybe reduce it within a shorter period of time. So that was something that I in particular had pushed for reduction in the length of that millage so that we can look at it in a few years after the building is built and see if we can reduce it next time around.
The Ingham County Board of Commissioners recently approved additional funding for the Ingham County Prosecutor's Office to work with the Michigan State Police as they conduct an audit of the Ingham County Sheriff's Office Evidence Room. I'm interested in your thoughts on that.
Well, that was, I supported that when it came before the BOC last week, and also when it came before Law &amp; Courts previous to that. It all took place in the last couple of weeks. Prosecutor Whitmer had recommended it so that they could take a look at, hire a prosecutor who had previously worked there, who could go through case records and determine if there were other cases that were harmed by the damage that took place in that evidence room. For those of you who aren't familiar with the story, there was some sewage overflow and overflowed toilet or something that took place on a floor above the evidence room, and it contaminated evidence that was housed there. This took place like four years ago, but it only came to light recently. It was, came out in some news stories. And obviously, there was criticism of the Sheriff's Department over it. So I think it was very wise and responsible of Prosecutor Whitmer to ask to get some additional funding, $20,000. We were able to do that pretty easily, to begin to examine if other cases were harmed because ultimately, you know, we have a responsibility to the community to assure that what we're doing is right and just. And some of the arguments that you heard, that we heard during the course of this discussion was that a lot of the evidence never really ends up being used in court because cases are plead out, you know? Cases don't end up before trial because, you know, a defendant makes a plea, and the prosecutor offers a plea, the defendant takes a plea. You know, that is a likely scenario, but I think that it's important for, you know, our own integrity and the integrity of the Sheriff's Department to assure that we see how that, the consequences of that unforeseen event. I mean, it was nobody's fault. The evidence room is located in a very aging jail and sheriff's administration complex. The infrastructure is poor. It was, from what I understand, the Facilities Department tended to it as soon as they found out four years ago so that the damage wasn't extended. But it's also become an issue, and there is a new, you know, there's going to be a vacancy in the sheriff's office, and there are a couple of candidates now running for that position to replace a sheriff who's been in that spot for decades. And that whole issue has come up during the debate, and both candidates have said that it was a wrong move not to announce that this damage had occurred when it had occurred, and that the Prosecutor's Office had a right to know. So, yeah, it's been, I've gone to a couple of debates where countywide officials have been present in discussing the issue, and it's certainly been discussed there as well as in the press.
Will you describe how funding is currently allocated to repair county roads, and if you think that is in line, those priorities are in line with, you know, community needs?
Right. Well, this has been an issue that's been debated in the State House as well as in counties that rely on state funding for roads, as well as in neighborhoods where motorists drive over potholes that, you know, cause damage to their cars, and it's an inconvenience, and it's a part of life that is a pain, basically, you know, in all seasons. So especially, you know, after the winter, when these potholes start popping up. There was, over a year ago, an increase in road funding at the state level, much debated, not as much as we, everybody had hoped Michigan would increase their road funding by. But all that filters down to the counties and to cities. Now, Meridian Township is not a city. It's a township, and so it relies on the Road Department to use largely to make improvements in their roads and has to maintain a good, I mean, I think we do maintain a good relationship with the County Road Department because of this responsibility, the work that happens, you know, together between Township Hall and the Road Department and the county. We are getting $3 million more dollars as a result of that road funding deal for next year. There's been a little more money made available this year. If you drive around the township, you'll see that some areas have been improved. There was a new resurfacing on Lake Lansing Road that was a big project. In my district, there was also a resurfacing done on Lake Drive, which is an area that suffers from pretty soil, some soil instability because it's near marshland, and as a result of that, it causes the road surfaces to decline quicker than in other areas where soils are more stable. That was recently refinished. We can expect to see more road resurfacing in that next year, and that's a good thing. I think people, you know, one of the things that I'd like to make sure that I do is let people know any means I have about roads that are coming up for improvements, and the Road Department's pretty good about sending out news releases that end up getting distributed through the media as well as on people's social media feeds so that we can, to hear what's happening. It's still, you know, overall, the funding at the state level is not enough to make the sizable improvements that we need. It was, at one time, talked about as a $1 billion need in Michigan. Didn't come close to that, and I don't know if it will. It certainly, I don't know how close we'll come to making the repairs we need. We have a lot of bridges in the state that are pretty seriously in disrepair, and it's a pretty expensive proposition. But I think we keep plugging along. I think it's really important for residents to contact the county. They can contact me. They can contact the Road Department. And also Township Hall to tell us, all of us, local and county, what your priorities are for improving your roads, what streets you want to see improved. As I've been canvassing during this election, I have run across folks who have given me insight into some of their neighborhood streets, and it's really important that citizens advocate for their neighborhoods and advocate for the roads that need improvement in their area. It isn't enough to complain among your neighbors. Send emails, follow up. There's a couple of areas that I'm following up with, with the township and the Road Department now, things that I've heard about. So you gotta, you know, in order for the county and the township to set priorities, they need to hear from, they need to be advised by the citizens. So this is an area that's very important around here because we rely on the county in large part, not entirely. The township has its own local roads millage. But it's really important that you let your voice be heard on this. And also, as far as potholes are concerned, go on the County Road Department website, and you'll see a phone call to call in and to report a pothole, and it usually works. I mean, call, report it. I've used that number. I mean, I can call the director myself, but I've often advised people to use that number when there's something in their area that is kind of a hazard. So just report it and advocate for your area so we can fix those annoying places. The other thing that I want to say that comes up quite often where roads are concerned, we still have some unsurfaced or dirt roads in the township, and I really think that that, some areas, you know, part of how, like, local roads get done is that it's an improvement where you assess the individuals who benefit from that particular road. Some people, especially in like rural suburban areas, would rather not have traffic cutting through their area, so they'd like to keep it that way. But I think that overall, I mean, that's something that we need to talk more about and examine because it really is a hazard on people's cars, and it makes it really tough for people to get to school or their places of employment. We're in a pretty urbanized area, and I'd like to work on that myself in the new term, figuring out what we can do to improve those surfaces. And I don't want to belabor this one issue, but I have been, I've been in regular touch with the department director, and we do have some unsurfaced roads in, like, along Tyhard and that. And the Road Department has been with limited funds to this point. They've been somewhat creative when there's been a construction project elsewhere like there was in the last year on Lake Lansing Road. They've actually hauled dirt from excavation sites there to Tyhard to begin to, you know, pile it on and strengthen that dirt road a little bit. So it's a lot of work. I'd rather that it was paved myself, but something to work on.
I want to remind our viewers that they are welcome to call in with their questions. It is (517) 349-1232, 349-1232. And then they can also tweet and Facebook their questions. #HomeTV with the hashtag #BallotMeridian. We're going to continue on with another question of mine until we get a call. What is your position on CADA's proposed Bus Rapid Transit Project?
Right. Well, that's a huge issue right now. It's affecting the local races that I hear about here in the township. It's a big question that the public has. People who have never been to a public forum are talking about it because there's certain perceptions that have arisen from some of the coverage and some of what they've heard about it. Technically, the county board doesn't have a responsibility over that issue. CADA, the CADA Board will ultimately make the decision based on the input that they've received. As you know, the Meridian Township Board, the local board, I'm not on the local board, has made a position that they've opposed it until there could be more input from the public, and I think they'll be talking about it again very, very soon. However, having said that, it is something that people ask me about, and I have attended at least the last two public forums in the township on this issue because I wanted to hear what the public has to say about it. It would involve, you know, assuming it takes place here in the township, it would make a big change in the way transit is provided in this area. Overall, I am supportive of transit projects because I think that we need to find a way to de-emphasize our reliance on single-passenger automobiles. It is not just the way of the future. It's been part of the past. I've lived in other areas. I've lived in Washington, DC, where I, before I moved there, I actually sold my car because it would be expensive to own it there, and they had a transit system that worked well between buses and the elevated, and the train system. That was my first experience with transit. Also, I've been, I grew up in the Detroit area, and there is a transit program coming up in Detroit right now that's gotten a lot of attention because Detroit is one of those cities, like Lansing, that's been really dependent on autos to get, move people around. And there's a lot of enthusiasm to begin to support some kind of transit plan. I think in terms of, I do have a lot of thoughts about this because I have concerns with how I've seen some of the forums take place and the public process, but overall, I think it would be a shame if the BRT stopped in East Lansing, which, where it would run, as you know and viewers know, it's proposed to run from the Capitol to the Meridian Mall. But because of the tone of the debate here in Meridian Township, there's been some discussion about ending it in East Lansing and around Haggadorn. If that were to happen, then riders coming this way would end up having to get off the bus and take a transfer bus out here, and I think that over time, that would become rather unworkable. Now, having said that, I do think that there's some real concerns about how it would operate in this area. There have been people who have complained about a single of the bus running down the center lane. CADA has come out with some other descriptions of how you would run that bus along the curbside, you know, from changing it out, running it along the curbside. There are certainly additional costs for that, so that's something to weigh. One of the things people have complained about, they've complained about the fact that these buses, particularly out here, don't seem to have a lot of riders to begin with. And that's, you know, that's a question, a legitimate question, that an average person would have because if it doesn't look like there's people using it, then what makes you think that people in the future would want to use these other, you know, high-speed buses? But frankly, this is, this is an area that gets into community planning where, and I've talked to a number of community planners in the area, and I've been told by many folks that if you begin to offer a service that runs more efficiently and gets people where they're going more quickly, then they will be more inclined to use that service. And so who would use that service? Well, we're, you know, our society's changing. People my age, the baby boomers are getting older, and there are a lot of us. And over time, I would like to be able to use something other than a car to get around town. I take, I work in downtown Lansing throughout the week myself. I tend to take Saginaw Highway because I live on the northern end of the township, not near Grand River, and that's worked pretty well. But if it became possible to have a station someplace at the mall, and I think it might be kind of cool to be able to use that, to get dropped off there and to be able to use that mass transit and change the way, you know, offer an easier way to travel. So in terms of the people that would use it, it isn't just this millennial group that has a desire to use mass transit because in their case, you know, they are saddled with very high college debts. Many people are delaying the kinds of things that people in my age group did, buying homes, getting married, settling down because of the high cost of their college debts. And for many of them, they don't have a desire to own a car. So I think that between the baby boomers and the millennials, there, you will see, and a more efficient system, you will see a desire to use mass transit in the area. And as far as what the business owners have talked about, I can see how that would frighten them, the idea that people could not immediately make a left turn into their businesses as they do now. However, the plan which would call for these Michigan U-turns, they're so prolific, not prolific, but they're so commonplace across the state, in the Detroit area, even in this area, that I, if you had a business that you needed to go to on Grand River, one of mine, I go to Discount Tire. That's where I've bought my tires over the years, and I go in there to get my tire pressure checked, and they're really friendly there, and, you know, I just like working over, I just like their service. So I can't imagine not using that service because I would need to make a U-turn to get into it. And I think that many people, you know, over time, would find that something they can adjust to. I am interested in hearing more about those who have disabilities and those with disabilities, how we can make this work better for them. I know that the final plan isn't in place. I also want to see more information from I also want to see more information from them at this time, and I keep regularly checking on this, but the Michigan Department of Transportation is reviewing CADA's assumptions and projections, and they have not yet released their analysis. And that's something that I am very much looking forward to and keep checking in on because I'd like to know what this other independent view has about the program. So I think, you know, on the one hand, I think CADA has made some mistakes. I mean, as much as I'm a proponent of mass transit, I think CADA has made a mistake in how it's approached the public, but that doesn't mean that the plan can't be created in a way that better serves our future development here. Lastly, people talk about this kind of transit as bringing new development into the area. There has been a lot of work done on the master plan in Meridian Township, and I'm no expert because I've worked now at the county level for two years, and I haven't worked at Township Hall on this or in this capacity. But I do know that that master plan, planning, does include a future that provides more intensive development around certain hubs. And if we could develop more apartments in areas that need redevelopment or could be redeveloped in time, that would focus around these transit lines, I think that would serve us well overall because it would offer people this opportunity of not just living in an urbanized area, but also living someplace where transportation would be convenient. I started to say something about the mistakes CADA has made. I think their mistakes have been in the area of communications. I don't think they got ahead of the game very quickly. I haven't been totally impressed with how the forums have been run. I think it sent a bad message to hire a crisis communications firm to run their forums. The last forum that I attended, the PR person responsible for operating it, there were some engineers there, traffic engineers, that answered questions from the public. He was late, the PR person was late by about a half an hour, and when he arrived, he just didn't seem like prepared. And in the previous public forum that I attended, you know, I know it's hard because there are people with really strong anti-feelings about any kind of change like this. And I think that the person that operated that forum didn't carry the right tone either. So, I mean, I work in communications in my day job. I work in child advocacy for a public policy group, and so I kind of notice these things. And so I think that as we go forward, it would be helpful to kind of take a deep breath and like examine the issues, examine more closely what the public is saying and how we can adjust for that, examine what other reviews, like from the Michigan Department of Transportation, has to say about this. I think that transit plans are generally a good thing. There is federal money available for it, and I think it would be, if we can take advantage of it, then great. I do think that we can make some good improvements with this, but we just need to really look at how it should work best in Meridian Township. You know, we're not the same as everybody else, but I do think that we should be part of the greater Lansing area, and I think it would be a shame if we could, if the transit program ended in East Lansing.
We're more than halfway through our call-in debate with Teri Banis, Democratic incumbent candidate for the Ingham County Commissioner, 11th District. And we have about a little bit, less than a half hour left to go for your calls. Her opponent, Republican candidate Xavier Durand Hollis, declined to participate, and although he did decline, again, we are continuing with this program. And if you'd like to participate, please call with questions for the candidate by dialing 517-349-1232, or participate through social media on Twitter and Facebook using the handle #HomeTV, hashtag #BallotMeridian. I'd like to ask what changes you'd like to see in the near future for the Grand River Corridor?
It's not a function of my job as a county commissioner to study this and examine it. So whatever answer I give you is not one that, you know, I have a real studied response But in general, what I think, what I would like to see for our region, I would like to see more housing accessible to transit lines so that life could be easier. I live in an area, for people, I live in an area north of where we are right now, and when I run into issues with my vehicle and transportation, I'm almost landlocked in my neighborhood. And I know that we want to, I know that the township has, I believe the township has done a pretty good job of trying to contain the growth within established urban boundaries and to create, you know, maintain those rural areas where they are. But I think in terms of the Grand River, Michigan corridor, that has been an established business area. There are apartments near there. I'm hopeful that we will also have other options like non-motorized trails that provide access for people who live along that corridor to be able to travel to and from school, i.e. Michigan State, to and from the downtown area, make it more accessible for them to use that. And that's something that I've been working for as a county representative. When I came on the board a little over a year and a half ago, I was asked to serve as the chair of the Trails Task Force, which was designed, which was created to begin to put plans together for implementing millage dollars that the voters had approved for a non-motorized system across the county. And because I had spent 10 years working as an elected official on the Meridian Township Park Commission, I had some background in the area, in that field. So I happily took the job. It became very difficult at times. There were many communities around here, i.e. Lansing in particular, that wanted to get their hands on that money right away, but I thought that it was important that we be able to create a program and accountability on how the money is used, and then some transparency on how we apply the money for these projects. And that needed a real studied effort, and we worked with consultants and we got the job done. And now we're at a position where we've already handed out four projects. We've done a big fix where we've improved, we've started to release funding for close to $1 million in 13 miles of trail improvements across a number of communities that have trail systems, including Meridian Township, and another close to $5 million for bridge repairs, including some in Meridian Township, over $650,000 for Meridian Township so far in these first two years. So that's something that I'd like to see along this populated corridor. I'd like to see off-road possibilities for people to travel, for recreation and also for employment and for getting around town. It makes for a healthier lifestyle, and so it's just good for people in general. And I think that this has been a popular program, and it will continue to be a popular program. We're now, the county is now entertaining requests from communities for projects this month and into early November for new construction, which is something that will hopefully benefit communities like ours that have already begun a trail system but would like to connect, fill in those gaps with neighboring communities. So the other thing that I guess I'd like to see, and I'm not a planner, a community planner, and again, this, you know, is kind of a question that you could run by people who work in community planning, but I'd like to see more businesses along the corridor that have outdoor, like patio seating, especially restaurants, so that it's more walkable, it's more usable, it's just a nicer place to be as opposed to just a highway system, you know, a busy highway system.
Our next question for you is going to come from a caller. We have Denise from Hazlet. Denise, go ahead with your question. Okay, we're going to wait, and maybe we can get Denise back.
She can tweet her question.
Or maybe she can tweet it. I know that we have a tweet that is coming in. I'm not sure if that's ready yet, but...
What's the Twitter handle?
Home TV.
Just Home TV?
Yep, @HomeTV. And then to make sure that we get it, hashtag #BallotMeridian. I mean, so we're going to get it, but that brings it up so that we can see it.
Don't lose faith, Denise, come back.
The lines are open. Call back Denise. So as you were talking about off-roads and those types of things, I think, wait, before we go there, Denise is on the line. Denise, what's your question?
Hi, I was wondering what kind of things are being done at the county level to help troubled youths, kids that are struggling in school or the court system?
Yeah, thank you, Denise. That's a great question. Back in August, Ingham County voters approved a renewal for what we call our Juvenile Justice Millage, and that funds a number of programs to help troubled youths who may get into trouble with the law or have already gotten into trouble with the law, get diversion programs that help with diversionary work. And one of the big features that is funded by the Juvenile Justice Millage is the Ingham County Academy. The Ingham County Academy, which is located in Lansing, takes in youth who are court-ordered to attend the program, and there they receive, it's a day treatment program, and it's also a school. It's a place where they can come and attend classes, classes that are helped organize through the Ingham County Intermediate School District. Teachers from the Lansing area help them. Class sizes are small, about 12 people classroom, and they're able to get their high school diplomas by working there. They also get a lot of support in terms of help with like behaviors and attitudes and behavior modifications and programs that help them sort of deal with life differently in a more positive way because many of these youth, you know, they get into trouble because they haven't had the best upbringing. They've had pressures and challenges that the rest of us haven't faced. Many of them have come in through the foster care system. Many have come in because they've been homeless, or they've been involved in gangs or some type of violence. And they get a lot of really positive attention from some really, really good people and smart people. And it's a program that was created a number of years ago with support from sociologists and psychiatrists from the University of Cincinnati and Michigan State University, and it's been very, very successful. Those kids who end up graduating, and every year they have a graduation, those kids who end up graduating, the recidivism rate is very, very small. It's less than 3%. So it really is a place where lives are changed. And not only do the programs, our programs geared to the youth, but they also help their families too because these kids come from families that are troubled and have faced challenges. And so this Juvenile Justice Millage has been studied across our state. Other communities are trying to replicate it. It's really been a very progressive thing that we've been able to do. We've also been able to help create other programs like the Teen Court, where teens work together with other teens with the help of the court system to sort of help bring kids who've gotten into traffic violations and others back on the right path. And it's a really positive thing that we've been able to do, and it's made a difference because for anybody who gets involved with the court system at a young age and ends up going into adult prison or jail, the likelihood, it's a really hard battle to try to fight back and to come back out and try to get an education and gain full employment, especially if you have a felony record. So to be able to, you know, to rescue these kids, and many of them are tough to work with, but we've got a really good program for it, is life-changing. And not only that, but they're part of our communities. These kids come back and they make positive impacts on our community. One of the graduates that I had a chance to hear from last summer who graduated from the program had made a really nice speech to over 200 people who came to the graduation at Ingham Academy and said that he planned to go into nursing because he wanted to help other people. He wanted to help other people and kind of give back for all the help that he had gotten. And this kid had been lost until he ended up there. Something cool that's happening tomorrow night, tomorrow's the 18th of October, Ingham Academy is going to have a candidate forum. They're having candidates for Ingham County Prosecutor and Ingham County Sheriff come to their facility, and they're going to have a candidate forum where the kids, the youth ask questions of these candidates. There's also state house candidates who have been invited too, and they're going to talk about all kinds of really tough and raw issues and strike up a conversation with these potential office holders to try to give, you know, raise up their youth voice and help improve people's awareness and hopefully public policy down the road. So it's something I've really enjoyed learning a lot more about since becoming a county commissioner here in the last two years, and it really speaks well for some of the progressiveness that we have in this community.
We have a tweet now, as we were talking about tweets, and Julie Bricksy asks, "What do you think about special voted millages like the County Trails Millage and the Animal Shelter?"
Well, we've talked about that earlier in the program, and I wasn't a county commissioner when the Trails Millage came in, but I did vote for it. And I was supportive of the animal control millage. And here's the thing, you know, in Meridian Township, where we have limits in how much we can raise for our millage for administrative operations, we are accustomed to going out and asking the community to approve special millages because we don't have the authority without doing that. And so in the county, I see, you know, with the Animal Control Millage, that's brand-new, that was approved in August, I sort of see a little bit of the same scenario happening where if we want to do improved services, it's very difficult to do it within our current budget constraints because we are, there's several things happening. One, like all governments, our millage is based on property taxes. Property taxes have been declining for years. The recessionary years, starting in around 2008, created some really hardships for municipalities in terms of the kind of property values that we had. Now, we've seen a little bit of a bump, about half a percent increase in property values in Ingham County, but it still isn't making a huge difference in terms of our property revenues to provide the type of top-notch quality services that we want. Also, property taxes on personal property tax was reduced by the state. That was a decision by the state. So, you know, in the county, we lost that share of revenue. Our state share revenues have not been, have been rather stagnant. We haven't seen any additional monies there. And also, our pension fund through the MERS system is requiring us to put in a couple million dollars more a year... million dollars more a year, and that will be happening for the next few years until the early 20s, like around 2021. So we, and not only that, but our, our healthcare costs are going up by about 9%. It would be more had we not changed our, the way we offer health benefits and also a pension plan for our employees back a few years ago in 2013. New employees now have, you know, this kind of pension plan where they have defined benefits and defined contributions. And so as a result, when it comes to the type of infrastructure improvements that we need, like the Animal Shelter, which was, is a miserable place, the air quality is horrible for not just the animals, but I always worry about the people who work there as well, our employees. It's difficult to make those kinds of changes unless you get new revenues. And so often that means looking to the voters and talking to the voters about the potential for additional special millages. But, you know, we are sensitive to the fact, like people are here at the township, that you, you know, you can't always, there's going to, there has to be a balance between what people are willing to pay and what you're willing to ask them for. But it has to be, we have to have that constant conversation. And there's been a lot of talk lately about the financial challenges that the county is under and the fact that the state, you know, requires us to do certain mandates without funding them. So it's a constant conversation you have to have with the public.
We're nearing the end of our, our debate for the Ingham County Commissioner, 11th District candidate, and we're going to close now the phone lines and extend the opportunity for our guest to make a closing statement.
Well, I, I guess what I'd like to say is that I have always appreciated the opportunity to serve the community, my community here in Meridian Township at the local level and also at the county level. I love where I live. I love this community. I've never lived anywhere as long as I've lived here. I lived in Meridian Township back when I was a student at MSU and now raising a family and children that have gone off to college and careers. And it's always been personal for me. It's always been a place where I've cared about my neighbors, I've cared about the issues in my community. It's been important for me to have conversations with people about things that really matter. I used to be a newspaper reporter for 20 years, and I, I spent a lot of years attending public meetings and watching and learning, and I have tried to fashion myself as somebody who's very concerned and caring and who's willing to study issues and become knowledgeable about the things that are challenging us today so that I could have those conversations with people and be influenced by what the community tells me. I now work in public policy, and it's another opportunity to try to make positive changes. And, and so I sort of view, view my work at the county level as being a way to sort of kind of give back to my community by helping to make things run better and stronger and in a way that's more satisfying for the general public so that this is a good place to live and becomes a better place to live. It's all about community for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for watching the Ingham County Commissioner, 11th District debate. Join us live on Wednesday, October 19th, for not one, but two debates. Yep, two. From 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM, we've got the Meridian Township Supervisor Debate between Republican candidate Tom Klunzinger and Democratic candidate Ronald J. Steika. And then from 8:00 to 9:00 PM, for the Ingham County Commissioner, 12th District Debate, between Republican candidate Christopher Pausat and Democratic incumbent candidate Deb Nolan. HomeTV's Ballot Meridian election coverage is available online at hometv.net. I'm Eric Sherman. Thank you for watching.